Trustee Kessel?
Trustee Kessel?
Here.
Trustee McDonald?
Here.
Treasurer Korsange?
Here.
Trustee Shipley?
Present.
Trustee Nordhook?
Here.
Clerk Slater, here. Supervisor Lasperance?
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Their motion or discussion for approval of tonight's agenda?
Shipley makes motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee McDonald, to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Article four, we have one presentation this evening. The Honorable Jeffrey O'Hara, sixty-third District Court Judge is here to present a brief overview about a unique treatment program that's available to those that apply. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. And good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am the Chief Judge at sixty-third District Court. Our court is our community court, our township court. So we go all the way up to twenty-two mile, all the way down to to Caledonian, Byron Township. And I've started a treatment court. We call it Recovery Court. It is for addiction and alcoholism. And that is a reality in every single community. It's not just in the inner cities. It's not just in the poorest of the poor areas. It's in Cascade, it's in Byron, it's in Cannon, it's everywhere. And what I see on a day-to-day basis is sadness. I see good people, like everyone here in this courtroom, or this township, where they've lost their lives because of alcohol, or heroin, or fentanyl, or methamphetamine. And at one point in time, they were healthy. And so we call our program Recovery Court, because it is so much more than sobriety. Sobriety is the foundation of it. Sobriety is the cornerstone. But we call it Recovery Court, because we also incorporate mental health, treatment, physical health, emotional health, spiritual health. I require every one of our participants to engage in a half hour of healthy habits every single day, whether it's taking a walk, whether it's reading something that inspires you, journaling, coloring. There's a lot of neuroscience in this program. And it is evidence-based, it's science-based. And the program works because of all these things that we're talking about. I don't want people just to get sober while they're on probation in front of me. I want to see them in five years run into a Meyer, or wherever, and their life's back in order. So in order to be in my programs, you have to have, unfortunately, at least two drunk driving, or two drunk drivings, or one alcohol, one drunk, two drugs, two alcohol, or more. And we score them based on high risk and high needs. The factors are high risk, high needs. Is there a high risk that they're going to reoffend? So maybe someone had a conviction twenty years ago, and now a drunk driving at a point zero eight. That likely isn't high risk, although it could be if they have continued to drink for the last twenty years. So high risk, high needs. And once they're in the program, I meet with them every other Friday, twice a month. And so if I'm sitting where Grace is, and this is the courtroom, we have a lectern, and I call each one of the participants up, one by one. And I call them by their first name. I don't call them by their last name. It's the first name. I get to know who they are. I get to know their kids. I get to know what their interests are. And I talk about most everything other than addiction. I ask them about their work. I ask them about going to the kids' field trip. I ask them about whatever. And we talk about becoming healthy. There's three principles in our program. They're straightforward. Number one, the first principle is honesty. And when I say that, I mean honesty with yourself. I want them to feel accountable to themselves to make better decisions. And the way I keep them accountable is that we test them all the time. An addict will look you right in the eye and say, Judge, I'm doing good. I'm doing good. I'm not using. Well, we go test them, and they test positive. And then I have to talk with them about why do you lie to me? It's very much like parenting. And so the first principle is honesty. And I tell them, I say this quietly, I say, the reality is, this is hard. And the reality is, relapse is real. But don't tell me you can't, and don't tell me that you're just going to go relapse. I mean, I expect you not to. But the reality for me, in my mind, and knowing this program, that relapse is real. And so I tell them, if you use, I want to know before I test you, I want you to come clean to me and tell me that you screwed up. Well, if they do that, we've got them. Because then they're starting to be honest themselves. And they're feeling the guilt of it. So the second principle is, how bad do you want your life back? Because these people are in the darkest of darkest places. And they have woken up so many times, shaking their heads of, I can't believe I said that to my spouse. I can't believe I did that. I can't believe I'm such a jerk. I can't believe I burned every single bridge there is. The young participants have been kicked out of their parents' house. The spouses kick them out. Brothers and sisters won't talk to them. They've lost five jobs. And they're not necessarily homeless, like sometimes what we see in your mind's eye with downtown Grand Rapids or big cities homeless, but they're couch surfing homeless. Because they've gotten kicked out. So they call a friend, can I stay for a couple, whatever? And then they stay there for a couple of days, a couple of weeks, and then they get kicked out of there because people don't, because it's self-destruction. And so the second principle is, how bad do they say to themselves? How bad do I want this? Because if they're doing this for their spouse, or if they're doing it for their mom, if they're doing it for whomever, they'll never make it. They have to do it for themselves. They have to feel that in the depths of their stomach and soul. They have to feel that need, that must, that I must get better. And the third principle, straightforward, honesty, how bad you want it. The third principle is never give up. That goes back to the relapse, because they're going to relapse. And I tell them all the time, as long as you don't give up on yourself, I won't give up on you. This program's hard. And I tell the participants as they begin the program, if you want easy, do regular probation. And when you violate, I'm just going to throw you in jail. We're going to be done. And you go through your thirty days, your sixty days, your ninety days, whatever it is. But if you want your life back, this program works. And it works because of you, not because of me. That's what I tell the participants. It's not because of me. I'm here to oversee. I'm here to coach. It's because of you and the efforts you're putting forth. It's hard. But we give them hope. And hope is real. Hope is a really important word in our program. And I say, you need more than just, I hope, I hope, I hope. It's hope with effort. You have to give effort every single day. Because the disease of addiction never goes away. It's always there. The other aspect of this program is that if you're around friends, friends that are using, you might say no tonight. You might say no this weekend. But if they're your friends and you're hanging around with them, it's just a matter of time that you go back to your old ways. And that is a reality. We celebrate when people do well. We give them a thirty-day coin. We give them a two-month coin. We give them every month, all the way up to one year. And then after one year, we give a two-year coin. People clap when someone's at six months. People clap when someone's at seven months, or whenever, whatever it is. And there's a lot of camaraderie. And then in that camaraderie of our program, there's twenty-five or thirty participants. They become friends, and they're pulling for each other. And then there's a relapse. And I handle the relapse in front of everybody for accountability, for transparency, to make sure that everyone knows that I... You don't necessarily treat everyone exactly the same, because people come from different places and different levels of difficulties and childhood. And so I do treat each case individually. But when someone relapses, I bring them in front of everybody. I have a team also. I have a team. I have a probation officer, chief probation officer. I have a prosecutor, because when they relapse, they're going to be sanctioned. I have a defense attorney, because their liberty is up, they could be placed in jail. I have a treatment provider. I have a surveillance officer, who is a deputy, a retired deputy. And all together is the team. So when someone relapses, they come in front of me. And they can say that I didn't do anything wrong, or they can own it. And they typically always own it. But in the old way of doing things, when someone violates probation, I put them in jail. That's just, you know, and when I say that, I have my probation officers. They don't just check boxes. Okay, they violated one time, and we're going to... They work with them. They work with them. If they violate three, four, five, six times, then they come in front of them. And then I actually, yeah, that's what I do. I put them in jail. Most of the time, on first time around, I don't put people in jail, but if they violate probation, I do. Well, with Recovery Court, they violate, I don't put them in jail. The first thing I do is I have them write me a letter. Why weren't you strong enough? Why didn't you apply the principles? And what are you going to do next time? Because there's going to be a next time. And no AI. Write it from the heart. Don't go on the computer. I want to hear. I want to read the words from your heart. There's a lot of emotion in this, emotion. And they write the letter. Well, a month later, because it's addiction and it's hard, and if you just snap your fingers, say, okay, I don't want to be an addict anymore, that's now what happens. This is real. So they try it again. And I encourage them. And I try to inspire them, and I try to motivate them. So two months later, they use again. I don't put them in jail. I make them go to the dump for two Saturdays and smell the stench of the dump, work crew, two Saturdays. And then they come back, and I try to inspire them, and I try to motivate them. Tell them that life's so much better. You're doing great. You've been clean, 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 clean. You relapsed. I know it's hard. I don't want to hear it. Don't tell me you have excuses for it. Don't give me excuses. Just figure it out. What happens when they relapse a third time? I put them in jail for two days, forty-eight hours, just enough to get their attention. I don't want them to get comfortable there. I don't want them there to be a long time, but I want them to know that they're going to be accountable to themselves, to the court, to the participants. And after about three times, you know, they're either well on their way, or they're not. And quite frankly, everyone's been well on their way, except one person. Except one person. I've been certified for four years. My court has been certified for four, excuse me, for two years. I've run this program for four years. I started the program in an informal basis when I was elected ten years ago. Crazy, ten years that I've been on the bench. But I started this program four years ago, right at the pandemic, right before the pandemic. And so everything was on video and Zoom. But we became certified. So the benefit of being certified is we have funding. We have federal and state funding for testing, because testing's expensive. And these men and women don't have a lot of money, because they've been kicked out of everywhere, and they're not working. So another thing we work on is stable housing and stable employment. Because when you get up in the morning, and you have somewhere to go, you're productive, you work all day, you go home, you get some dinner, you watch some wireless TV, you go to bed, you get up the next day, you find out that's a good life. It's almost undoing everything that they've been living for years. And the other reality is, when they come to you, they've been living lies for a year. And so when I'm telling them, I want you to come to me and tell me that you've tested positive before we test, that you're going to be positive before I test you, they're going, you're crazy, O'Hara. I don't trust anything in this courtroom. I mean, they don't say that, but that's their mindset. Because they're used to always going to jail. But then the other participants come up in front of me, and they get to know each other, and they say, this is... And I'm not saying this, look at me. I'm saying this, I want to share what we're doing at court, because it's changing lives. And so some of my friends sometimes say, progress, progress, not perfection. You're doing great. Progress. No, it's perfection. Because let me tell you about addiction. You can be sober without alcohol, without drugs, for ten years. And you go back to drinking, it is a slipper slope. You go right back to your old ways. And you ask anybody who's involved in this type of treatment, you go right back. I've had participants who have been eight months sober, eleven months sober, twelve, thirteen months sober. And all of a sudden, on a weekend, the wheels come off. They've done great. I see them every two weeks. I've been seeing them every two weeks for eight months, for ten months, for twelve months. And the wheels come off, and I say, what the heck? And it's just real. It's always there. And so you always have to keep your guard up. That's why, in a sense, I sometimes talk about recovery and going to meetings, similar to an athlete lifting weights. And when you're lifting weights, and you're getting strong and strong and stronger, why stop lifting weights? And why stop being in shape? The analogy is, why stop going to your meetings? And another reality of my business, my reality of dealing with defendants outside of Recovery Court, is that some guy will come up in front of me who hasn't been in front of me for seven or eight years on another drunk driving. And I say, what the heck? What happened? What? You told me that you were sober for a number of years, and you said, I stopped going to my meetings, and I started drinking again. And that's my life. That's my professional life. And I'm trying to change lives and make a difference. We have a phrase in our program, there is no end date. Like, Judge, when would be a safe time to just have a beer? There's no safe time. Because it doesn't necessarily, the wheels don't always come off like a weekend crazy, although oftentimes it is. But they'll have a beer, and they'll think, well, what's going to hurt to watch a football game and have a couple, two or three beers? And then the next month is like, you know, that's kind of good, and I'm doing good. And next thing you know, they're drinking a six-pack. And that's the other way it unravels. So we try to give them hope. We try to instill accountability, self-accountability. I use phrases like, don't tell me you can't. Don't tell me you can't. If you're telling me you can't, you don't want it bad enough. And if you don't want it bad enough, don't be in this program. Just go the other way. Just do your time, because I want to change lives here. And that's what I'm doing. And thanks for listening.
Thank you.
Thanks. If anyone has any questions, it's my pleasure to be here.
Judge, phenomenal progress. So it's only for people if they've had two DUIs?
That's where we are right now. I want to start another program. Actually, we have, the governor's just signed a bill that we're going to have a third judge. We have two judges right now, Judge Smolinski and myself, in open seat for a third judge. I want to start a, without a driving, but possession or use of controlled substances. Because what I see, I see fentanyl, I see heroin, I see methamphetamine. And I tell these folks all the time, I said, this stuff's going to kill you. And I'll see some young lady who's pregnant, who's using, or someone who's got all these health problems. I dealt with that today. With a bad heart and other issues, and he's using methamphetamine. And I said, you know what? It's probably not very good for your heart. As I know. And their mind just doesn't think the right way. So we want to start another program. These treatment programs have been in existence for twenty years, twenty-five years. And when I was elected ten years ago, I knew that our community, this community, our community needed this. And I've been I've been very focused on making this happen. I also want to start just a straight, without driving, controlled substance program, because it'd be run the exact same way. But we'd be able to take people in who aren't driving, but are using various substances. And then I also want to start a domestic violence treatment court. I deal with domestic violence way too often. One time is too often, but that's a very complicated issue. And you know, your brain first says, you know, how could that ever happen? And why would she ever stay? And I know I'm stereotyping, but it's typically a man assaulting a woman. But there's so many reasons, and it's complicated. And these women need help to understand that, that I had a discussion with one yesterday. So I have landlord tenant cases on every other week. And a woman was telling me that she she didn't have enough money to make her rent. And so she was before the court on a non-payment rent case. And she told me that she was a victim of domestic violence. And she just started pouring her life out to me. And that's another program that our community would benefit by having a specialty court, a treatment court. So there's a lot that we can do, and trying to get people's lives back in order. Our court is designed, in my mind, is designed to help people get their life back in order. Circuit Court is a different court. It's a felony court, and you're seeing prison sentences, and that's appropriate. And it's the reality of Circuit Court. In terms of people coming in front of me on a regular, regular, you know, number of times, I am known as being pretty stern. So I think I'm stern with compassion, and that's where this program comes in. And that's what we try to do.
Well, best of luck to you, because you've got a restorative model versus a penalty model. And I think a restorative model is what we have to do in society. So hats off to you.
Yeah, thanks so much. And I appreciate you guys listening. And Grace, thank you for having me.
No, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you. Thanks for listening.
Article five, public comments. And now is the time for comments on anything on tonight's agenda. That includes sidewalk repairs, an early voting precinct location, and also an outdoor gathering space permit. Good evening, Mr. Van Solkman.
Hello. Hi there. I'm Scott Van Solkman. Just wanted to talk about the sidewalk repairs. They do look great. Thank you for doing that around the village. It's very, very nice and everything. Just while they're still around, I was talking with Timmy about this before we came in. It appears that someone either rode their, well, someone rode a bicycle, and also someone walked through some of the cement down near the corner of Cascade and Old Twenty-Eighth, probably. Okay, so it sounds like, it looks like you know about those.
Yeah, we found out today.
Okay.
See who did it?
No, I was walking my dog though, when I think it did happen. But it looks like they just didn't barricade it as much as they did later on, when they barricaded a lot more, like in front of the barber shop and International Beverage. So that was my concern. And then also, hopefully, that they will backfill on the sides of the sidewalk. Really? Okay, great. So that was it. Thank you. So just wanted to bring the concrete issue while they're still here. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone virtually? Article six, approval of tonight's consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Shipley supports.
It's a motion by trustee Kessel, supported by trustee Shipley, to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Article seven, financial actions, specifically invoices set to be paid on May twenty-third. Is there a motion or discussion?
Shipley makes a motion to approve the invoices that have been presented for us to be paid on five twenty-three of two thousand and twenty-four.
Support.
It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee Nordhook, to approve Article seven's financial actions. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Having no unfinished business, Article nine, first item of new business, zero four two, two thousand and twenty-four, approval of budget amendment and change order for sidewalk repairs. Manager Smith, an overview, please?
Yes. So on April twenty-fourth, we came before you to award this contract initially. When the construction crews got out there, they actually, after removal of the slabs, they realized that some of the slabs were six-inch slabs, which is somewhat pretty uncommon for sidewalks. Usually, it's just four inch. And then your your driveway approaches are actually six inches. So we have to obviously fill that back in. So we've got two options. One is to completely refill it with cement and go back to six inches, which we're pretty much recommending, or to do two inches of sand. But either or, it's going to cost us additional dollars. So we're back before you tonight with a request for a budget increase. As you can see, most of the work is already done. So we did not want to halt the project, because they did have sidewalks tore up, and there was a safety concern there. So that's, in a nutshell, that's what we're here before you tonight.
Questions? Comments?
Comment. I think it was a right decision, because our sidewalks aren't just for pedestrians or buildings and grounds. People also do snow removal, and they use equipment to do that. And I think it's the right decision to keep the sidewalks in decent condition for the foreseeable future. Four inches just doesn't hold up to constant snow removal apparatus.
So we authorized initially eighty-seven thousand, almost eighty-eight thousand?
Yes.
And this would be?
And this is eighty-three, eighty-two, eighty-three, eighty-three.
Hundred.
Yes. Sorry, that's eighty-eight thousand, three hundred and eighty-three dollars.
Wanted to make sure.
So move to approve the change order and the budget amendment. Go with it.
Shipley supports.
That's a motion by trustee McDonald, supported by trustee Kessel.
No, it's just...
Oh, I'm sorry. Trustee Shipley, to approve the change order on the contract and also the budget amendment, as stated. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next, item zero four three, two thousand and twenty-four, resolution to approve early voting precinct at Wisner Center. Clerk Slater, could you walk us through this, please?
Yes. So with a proposal of... Sorry. Early voting is what I want to talk about. Presidential primary, we had early voting, and it exceeded our expectations. We had anticipated low turnout, but Cascade Township had one of the highest volumes of early voting sites in Kent County, also compared to Grand Rapids, Wyoming, what I believe it was, Plainfield. And it was manageable, but we anticipate more voter participation in the upcoming elections. Now the voters know that early voting is an option. Participation will rise. The Township Office is not conducive for early voting for nine days. There is limited space for voting booths and equipment, and in cold weather, a line of people. So utilizing the Wisner Center would serve the residents and staff. And we have cleared this with the library. They have given us their blessing to do that as well. And it will include the expense of mailing a postcard to inform all voters that early voting is happening at the Wisner, which we're required to do anytime we change a location. So that has to, by law, be approved by the board. So I'm asking for that approval this evening.
Thank you.
You got staff in for it, Sue?
We do. Deputy Clerk Jager works way in advance and has been emailing our precinct inspectors just to find out who's interested in working it. And so we have quite a good arsenal of inspectors who are willing to do that. And some of them actually really enjoy doing that. So we have plenty of staff to do it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
I just want to make a comment in support of this, for whatever it's worth, is the makeup of the Township Hall, the way that the voice carries through that building, and then the lines. I wasn't here in two thousand and twenty for the record turnout, but I can't even imagine going through that process again in the current setup of the admin building. Everything carries, and we wouldn't be able to get any other business done, busy early voting days.
This makes sense. And it's really necessary. So I move to approve the resolution for the early voting precinct.
I support that.
Wisner Center.
That's a motion by trustee McDonald, supported by trustee Kessel, to approve the resolution approving the early voting precinct at the Wisner Center. Clerk Slater, please call the roll. approving the early voting precinct at the Wisner Center. Clerk Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee Nordhook.
Yes.
Trustee Shipley.
Yes.
Treasurer Corstange.
Yes.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Kessel.
Yes.
Clerk Slater, yes.
Supervisor Lusper. Yes, motion carried. Last item of new business, zero four four twenty twenty-four, approval of outdoor gathering permit for twenty-four sixteen Thornapple River Drive. Manager Smith?
Uh, yes, this is an outdoor gathering and noise permit that was received by Andy and Sherry who are here tonight to answer any questions for their wedding on June fifteenth at two four one six Thornapple River Drive. So just looking for approval.
What happens if they have the permit and it's the noise, it, it goes up to eleven and someone calls the sheriff's for noise?
They would come out and react accordingly. They would, they would do like a service call.
Does the outdoor permit allow you to?
The, this permit, I believe the condition is.
Decision with music or anything?
The, the condition is until eleven o'clock. This is, this approval is till eleven o'clock. So if there was a violation, the sheriff's office would get involved.
The point is, it's, it's, they still have to abide by the ordinance and that's what they're planning to do.
Correct.
With the permit.
Correct, yes.
Any concerns ever phoned into the office about?
No, the fires, the fire department and the sheriff's office were both consulted and have reviewed the request.
Does an outdoor permit get you to play, be able to play music louder? I guess that's what I meant.
I don't think louder.
I don't, I don't know about louder. I, I would have to read the noise ordinance. I don't know.
I don't think they can exceed the ordinance.
Yeah.
I bet you get a little more grace with the officer when he shows up if you have an outdoor and it's a wedding, so.
And, and I like that they put that it's contacting the neighbors.
Oh, yeah. Question for them was, did you really contact your neighbor? Okay. Well, as your neighbor upstream and on the other side of the river, we will be enjoying it Saturday night, so.
Yeah, she's, she wants, she wants the music louder.
Cascade Springs Drive is really looking forward to this.
One last comment for me. I think it's really great that our residents enjoy their yards and outside. I think it's a reflection on the pride in the community. And with that, I make a recommendation to approve the outdoor gathering permit for that date and that event.
Support.
That's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee McDonald, to approve the, the requested outdoor gathering permit for twenty-four sixteen Thornapple River Drive. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Congratulations.
Many happy, long years for you guys.
And no jokes, because we just want the best for you guys. Um, having no discussion items, next is the second portion for public comments on anything, whether it's on tonight's agenda or not. If you didn't go, it'd be really boring, so.
All right. Again, as I was here at the last meeting, I spoke about enforcement of ordinances, especially the hotel one. I hope you watched that or at least heard what it said. In regards to the used car lot that occasionally happens in the village of Cascade, the International Beverage. Almost consistently, probably maybe four to five days out of the week, there's a car out there for sale in violation of thirty-eight dash two. Sometimes there's even two cars there for sale. I do believe that is a employee of International Beverage. I don't really have any problem. I don't have a say or what have you, but you guys have rules on the books. They should be enforced. They, it says here, thirty-eight dash two, section B, provided that on any given lot or parcel such display is limited to a maximum of one vehicle per isolated occasion. And further provided that the location of such display is confined, you know, they leave it in the parking lot. But again, isolated. It's there every, you know, there's cars there every week. So that's my concern. Also, I believe we have ordinances regarding putting signs on the telephone poles. There's some for happy window cleaning at the corner of Tuffy. So again, obviously, taking the signs down is one thing, but calling the number on there, having our zoning or administrative person contact them, say, hey, come take your signs down or we're going to cite you, would also be good. You know, just looking for enforcements of all the ordinances. You can have ordinance, all the ordinances you want, but if they're not enforced, they don't mean anything. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone virtually? Okay, Article twelve, this will be, or this would be a closed session pursuant to MCL fifteen point two six eight, specifically to consider material exempt from public discussion or disclosure by state statute, which would be the potential lease or purchase of real property. It's a follow-up to a closed session we had, I think, several months ago. Their motion?
Motion to adjourn the regular meeting, go into closed session.
Second. It's a motion by trustee Kessel, supported by treasurer Corstage, to go into closed session. Clerk Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee Kessel.
Yes.
Trustee McDonald. Treasurer Corstange.
Yes.
Trustee Shipley.
Yes.
Trustee Nordhook.
Yes.
Clerk Slater, yes. Supervisor Lusper.
Yes, motion carried. We're now in closed session. We'll meet briefly in the history room and thank you.
Make a motion, return to open session. Shipley supports.
A motion by trustee Kessel, supported by trustee Shipley, to return to open session. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Manager comments?
Uh, just a couple of quick items. One, we had our pre-construction meeting last week on the Cascade Road Bridge over the Thornapple. So the road construction part is going to start this summer after school gets out, followed upon by the pedestrian improvements on either side. Everything will be complete by the middle of November this year. We'll be back.
Any idea like when after school gets out or not yet?
I don't have the exact date, no. But we'll be coming back before the board with an update in regards to the, the bids are due back on the pedestrian improvements. I think they were due back today, actually. So I'll get what Eric can bring back before you. But I know that's a hot topic and people are anxious to see those improvements. We talked about sidewalks earlier. Just want to let everybody know that will be completed this week. Restoration is supposed to be a part of that as well. They may have to come back a couple of days next week to finish the restoration.
About the sidewalks?
Yeah, we're, we're calling them. If, we'll get it taken care of.
Who pays for it or is it just worked out?
Uh, we'll, we'll do some identification on that foot and see where we can go.
We just want to make sure.
Send an invoice to.
I think it was like Yorkie paw prints and.
He's not listening to you.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, you did see it?
Yeah.
Okay. Right. Well, well, we'll get, we'll get it taken care of. And then I will just address, there were some questions about the ordinance officer and enforcement with the, the ordinances that we have. We are a one-person show in ordinance enforcement, not, not making excuses, but any additional information that we can get when you see things like that, this goes for anybody here or at home, please let us know so we can get out there and take a look at it and respond appropriately, so. And that's all I have tonight.
I have a question for you, Jade. The land be, uh, just adjacent to the pathway, do we maintain that or does this county maintain?
So for years, the township has maintained both sides, the roadside and the, the right-of-way side between the, the pathway and the, the home. Melanie, Parks and Recreation has made the decision that we're only going to be, we only need to do the, between the pathway and the home side. The roadside is the responsibility of Kent County. There's no other community around us that actually maintains that either. The Kent County does it all. So we're working with Kent County to make sure that Cascade gets taken care of along the pathways.
We're not giving it away anymore. We, we're busy with other stuff.
We've had a couple of calls this week.
Yeah, and at Bridgewater and Thornapple River Drive, it used to be when you looked toward the Camelback Bridge, there was all kinds of junk in there. The people that bought that house in the corner cleaned it all out, laid a grass. On the other side, the grass is so high, it hides a car. You know, coming from Thornapple River or coming from Cascade Road toward Ada. You gotta get way out there and look.
Yeah.
Surprising how the grass can hide a whole car.
So I, I will get an update and I will send an update to the board once I circle back with Melanie. This just, this has been kind of a hot topic this week.
There's several intersections in the township where if you try to turn right, you have to go out into the adjacent road to see around the brush that's growing up and brown corners. Clearway Lake Drive is.
We've talked about this to be a gathering place. It's that way.
That's landscaped.
It is.
The, the big pots and stuff are.
Not our pots, it's more closer to some outside sidewalk. You have to really get out there and ride off there and have a river drive on.
Well, if you have a red car, it's kind of hard to see over those pots. Just saying.
I'm just saying. Well, what kind of car would have a difficult time seeing over those pots? A go-kart.
That's all I have.
Okay. Board member comments?
Always stand up and thank my bosses for being here and anybody that's out in Zoom land. Scott, it's nice to see you persevere. And folks, I love talking to you too. I wish that everybody had stayed, but I understand. And that's all I have to say, other than who's going to take care of the four turkeys that wander through my yard in mornings.
What's that quote? Ask not what government can do for you, but at what you can do for government. I'm going to start, I'm going to put that as my signature line on my email.
That's a good one.
Yeah.
I am from the government. I'm here to help.
That one too, back-to-back quotes. That should be all.
That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, any other further comments? Their motion?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
It's a motion by clerk Slater, supported by trustee McDonald, to adjourn. All in favor? We are, motion carried, we are adjourned.